Thank you.
Do we have to stick around for an answer at the end? Rita?
We can just go ahead and report out since we have another one. We'll do both report out at the public meeting at the end.
At the 5:00 meeting?
Yeah, I'm going to let the mayor know that he should announce that that we're going to do the report out at the 6:30 public meeting for both.
So we can leave here and come back at?
Yeah, normally we would have to, but since it's the same day, I think I'm comfortable with that doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Richard.
Yes?
Is my audio good?
Yes.
It's good?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
It is 1:00, and I believe we have a quorum. So this is the open session or public comment before closed session. Madam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bates.
Present.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Johnson. Absent. Councilwoman Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. And Mayor Butt.
Here. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do have public speakers for this item.
So we do not have any?
Yes, yes, we do.
And just, okay, would you, would you call them, please?
Mayor Butt, let me read the items to the record.
Sorry, read the, yeah, read the agenda, please.
Okay, the council will be discussing in closed session, special closed session, City Council Conference where legal counsel existing litigation sprawl death at all versus City of Richmond, North Coast Rivers Alliance at all, Point Mulattie Alliance at all versus Conference where legal counsel anticipated litigation. There are three cases, and that is, and it seems that we skipped over item B, public comment instructional video.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted via Zoom pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. The mayor will call upon council members, staff, and other guest speakers by name. Please speak clearly and state your name before giving comments or remarks. Council members, staff, and guest speakers participating via Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Community members participating via Zoom wishing to speak should use the raised hand feature or dial *9 if participating via phone, and the mayor or city clerk will call upon them at the appropriate time. Community members will have up to two minutes to speak, three minutes for public hearings. After the speaker's time expires, staff will lower their hand and mute their mic. Community members participating via phone will be called upon to speak by the last four digits of their phone number. Public input and participation are of the utmost importance to the City of Richmond City Council. Therefore, it is important for public speakers to be ready to address the council when called upon. Public speakers are requested to state their names and city of residence, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received before and during the meeting in accordance with the COVID-19 Public Comment Guidelines printed on the meeting agenda will be entered into the record and published at the clerk's office webpage. If authors of written correspondence would also like to speak on the item, they should raise their hand when prompted by the mayor, and the city clerk will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The meeting can be seen on KCRT's TV channel and is being streamed on Zoom, YouTube, and kCRT.com. Thank you for participating in a meeting of the City of Richmond City Council.
Debido a COVID-19, esta reunión se llevará a cabo a través de Zoom, en conformidad con las secciones de la Orden Ejecutiva del Gobernador N-2920, que suspende ciertos requisitos de la Ley Brown. El alcalde llamará a los concejales, a los empleados de la ciudad y a otros invitados a hablar por nombre. Por favor, hable claramente y diga su nombre antes de dar su comentario. Se recuerda a los concejales, empleados de la ciudad y otros invitados participando a través de Zoom, con sus cámaras encendidas que sus actividades son visibles al público. Miembros de la comunidad participando a través de Zoom que deseen hablar deberían de usar la función levantar la mano. En inglés, raise hand, o marcar estrella nueve si están participando por teléfono. El alcalde y la secretaria municipal llamarán a los oradores en el momento apropiado. Miembros de la comunidad tendrán hasta dos minutos para hablar y tres minutos para temas de audiencias públicas. Después de que se expire el tiempo de orador, se le bajará la mano y el micrófono será silenciado. Miembros de la comunidad participando por teléfono serán llamados para su turno usando los últimos cuatro dígitos de su número de teléfono. Los comentarios y la participación del público son de suma importancia para el consejo municipal. Por lo tanto, es importante que los oradores públicos estén listos para dar sus comentarios al consejo municipal cuando sean llamados. Se pide que los oradores públicos indiquen sus nombres y ciudad de residencia, pero proveer dicha información es voluntario. Comentarios escritos recibidos antes y durante la reunión de acuerdo con las reglas designadas para comentario público durante el COVID-19, imprimidos en la agenda de la reunión, serán ingresados en el registro y se publicarán en la página web de la Secretaria Municipal. Si los autores de la correspondencia escrita también desean hablar sobre el tema, deberían levantar la mano cuando sea pedido por el alcalde, y la secretaria municipal los llamará en el momento apropiado. Se realizará una votación nominal para todos los puntos de acción. La reunión se podrá ver en el canal de televisión de KCRT y también se transmitirá en Zoom, YouTube, y kCRT.com. Gracias por participar en una reunión de Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Richmond.
Now, would you call the public speakers, please?
Yes. Sabrina, we'll call the public speakers.
The group of speakers that I currently see with hands raised are Jeanne Courts, Tarnell Abbott, Sally Tobin, Andrea Soto, Jim Hansen, Norma, and Pam Stello. Jeanne Courts, you'll have two minutes, you may begin.
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon, Jeanne Courts, Richmond resident. Please come to a settlement agreement on Point Mulattie. The more time spent on planning this terrible project, the more money the city is spending for staff time for a project that will cost Richmond taxpayers millions. And we know SunCal will find a way to reimburse themselves with Richmond tax dollars through the project. It's common practice for firms like SunCal. The taxpayers of Richmond are sick and tired of spending money for Mayor Butt's terrible planning ideas, for his ego, and for gifting his friends, or in this case, getting Jim Levine and John Salmon's back, John Salmon back their investment on a non-refundable investment on Richmond's dime. You all know the drawbacks to building a luxury housing enclave at Point Mulattie. It's dangerous, it's far from public transit, it will cost the city millions in infrastructure, a police station, and a fire station, and it's an environmental disaster for a multitude of reasons. It takes public land, recreation, and shoreline access from Richmond's youth and families. Again, please don't take our public land from the residents of Richmond, build in the core of the city. There are plenty of empty lots that could be bought for less money than in most Bay Area cities. Build affordable and mixed-use housing on these lots with infrastructure already in place and your public transport. Affordable and mixed housing in our neighborhoods brings housing, jobs, and wealth-building businesses, business opportunities to our neighborhoods where needed, excuse me. And Point Mulattie can provide much-needed recreation, soccer, and other, other, and other playing fields, outdoor programs in classrooms, water sports, with federal, federal money now available for parks and under-parked and resourced cities. Point Mulattie can be the jewel of the East Bay Regional Park District. You have the power and the public support. Building on the shoreline comes out of a 1990s planning. Please let the, get with the program and build for the 21st century as other Bay Area cities are doing within their cores. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell, you have two minutes, you may begin.
Yeah, Tarnell Abbott, Richmond resident. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am a Richmond resident, and I, I, I really urge you to do something completely different with regards to Point Mulattie. And, you know, maybe what you need to do is fire the outside consulting attorney and direct the city attorney to take a strong stand and fight for the people of the city rather than for the developer. And, yeah, the, the city might get sued, but maybe you could negotiate a settlement that involves a land trade, and they could build somewhere more suitable. And I think it's a real travesty to the environment as well as to the, for the loss of the public use of the land. I think the fencing up there should be torn down, and people should be allowed to have the trails up on the hillside. There's no reason for it to be fenced, and it's, it's really a crime against our rights as people to our land that's, that is public-owned. So if you think it's impossible to have a rough, wild place be enjoyed, I would suggest you go take a hike over at the Albany Ball and see how popular that rather rough former landfill has become a real hiking area for people of all sorts. The Point Mulattie Beach Park is used heavily by all kinds of people from throughout Richmond and the Bay Area, especially on the weekends where you see lots of people enjoying the beach park. And this is something that should be expanded and encouraged, and it's not the right place for building.
Your time has expired, thank you. Our next speaker is Sally Tobin. Sally, you'll have two minutes, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Sally Tobin, I'm a Richmond resident. And I would like to encourage the city council and the city attorney and the consulting attorneys that the city attorney has been using to resolve the Point Mulattie question by seeking a settlement with all parties. This would end up saving the city a great deal of money. And furthermore, it would benefit the city by providing the people of Richmond with a fabulous park. The taxpayers in Richmond support city salaries, including those of the city attorney, and it is only fair that they should gain benefit from public property. So I encourage the city to work to represent the people and to move forward. Do not block a fabulous park on the basis of fears. And I understand that there's been some, consider some thoughts having to do with the Fowler case, which is Fowler versus the city of Lafayette. But I would suggest that a pool cabana is totally different from a public park. And furthermore, the, one of the key points in Fowler was that bias could not be demonstrated, whereas the opposite situation is the case with Point Mulattie. So, so that case really does not fit, and to use Fowler might really just lengthen the potential litigation. So please seek a settlement, and let's move forward on a public park for the benefit of the people of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Soto. Andrea, you still have two minutes, you may begin.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Andrea Soto, and I'm a member of Point Mulattie Alliance and the Richmond Shoreline Alliance. And as a member of those groups, I really recently learned that Christian Marsh, the attorney hired to defend SunCal, and it was the same guy who was hired to defend SunCal in the notorious Alameda case. While we don't know all the details yet, this raises a lot of questions about why this wasn't considered a conflict of interest when he was first hired. And so, you know, it really raises the other question, which is, can he really work in the best interests of the city in, in this case? I would suggest that he cannot. I suggest you get a new counsel for this case. I suggest that you settle this case and let the people of Richmond get on with doing what they know is right, which is building out more park space to improve the health and the environment of our community. And this is two, two actions you can take right now. Terminate the contract with the attorney, get a new attorney, and then direct the city attorney to go ahead and settle this case. It's long past due, Richmond needs to quit spending money in this money pit that Tom Butt has created. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Hansen. Jim, you'll have two minutes, you may begin.
Thank you, council. This is Jim Hansen, Richmond resident. Thank you for your hard and challenging work on this. And it just, just bears repeating that, you know, you've been pitched the illusion of added property taxes from the current Point Mulattie Development Agreement. And believe me, that may sound attractive after many tens of hours of struggling with the city budget, but unfortunately, this path is worse than any direction we could go. It's just the, the nature of the thing. The chronic financial damage that would be inflicted on our city from the Point Mulattie Development Agreement with SunCal, SunCare, is, is clear and in writing for anyone to see. And I would just ask that you perhaps ask the city attorney to pull Section 4.2 from the Point Mulattie Development Agreement. This is just, you could throw a dart at that development agreement and be scared. It gives private developers and big investors, not you and the people of Richmond, the choice and sole right to set up a financing obligation on the people of Richmond through the Melrose Community Services District, as well as to, to decide what those taxes will pay for. Not you, not the people of Richmond. This is really about, as much about economic justice and fairness as any one of you has spoken for. It's just in fine print. The budget risk from the development agreement is, is so questionable. The city staff wouldn't even put it in any budget forecast you presented last year. I think that should be a red flag to red ink. The deep pockets of the last two developers who were given rights to Point Mulattie has been a hassle, to put it mildly. But moving ahead with this deal is really something worth fighting for and turning away from. So thank you again for your work on this. I know this is not easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Stello. Pam, you'll have two minutes, you may begin.
Oh, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Pam Stello, I'm a Richmond resident. I, I support everything that's been stated so far, and I just want to ask the city to please bring all the parties to the table for settlement talks. The city should have done this at the beginning of the year and saved precious resources. At any time, the city can back a settlement and start the process. And I think it bears reminding that what this really is at its core, it really is the mayor, Jim Levine, and John Salmon, who have through legal, it really, through backroom legal and backroom maneuvering, kept 400 acres of public land from the public. And they have done this for a long time and far too long. In 1997, the three of them put forward a high-end housing project at Point Mulattie, no public process, and it was shot down by the city council in Chevron. The three then led the casino deal, and yes, others were involved, but they were at the center of this. And that was shot down by referendum, but also because the Bureau of Indian Affairs of the Giddyville has no relationship to this land, it's a loany land. They kept the land from the public through litigation while they figured out what to do next. The three tried again in 2016, a high-end housing enclave like the one now that SunCal's putting putting forward, but smaller. It was shot down by Tom Butt's own appointees because it didn't have 70% open space, public access, and this current plan doesn't either. He dismissed the advisory committee. When nearing no more appeals, the city, when Levine was running out of appeals and you could finally get rid of Levine, the city settled with him in 2019 through a backroom deal for a high-end housing development. Only then did the city allow a public process, but then limited public input through the settlement deal. This has gone on for too long. It's time for a settlement. This land belongs to the people of Richmond.
Your time has expired, thank you. Our next speaker is Norma. Norma, you'll have two minutes, you may begin.
Hi, this is Norma. I did not raise my hand on my computer. It says my hand is lower. And the reason why I'm listening to this meeting, I have no opinion, I'm just interested in the special city council meeting, that's why I'm listening, but my hand is raised, but is reading lower, so maybe you need to check on your end, because I cannot lower my hand.
Okay, thank you. I just lowered your hand.
Okay, thanks, yeah, thank you very much.
The last speaker is Lucy Gill. Lucy, you'll have two minutes, you may begin.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor Butt and city council members. My name is Lucy Gill and I am a PhD candidate in the Department of Anthropology at UC Berkeley, and I'm also an archaeologist who has worked on many cultural resources management projects in the East Bay. In collaboration with colleagues at Berkeley, including Professor Kent Lightfoot, who is an expert in shell mounds of the Bay Area, I reviewed the cultural resources assessment that was prepared for, originally for the casino project in 2009 by Analytical Environmental Services. We found the archaeological research design, data collection, and analysis methods insufficient for characterizing the archaeological resources at Point Mulattie. In particular, no geophysical survey was done, which is the best method for characterizing subsurface shell mound deposits across large areas as well as other types of archaeological sites. The Confederated Villages of LaShawn, the aloney group on whose land this development project will take place, has requested a geophysical survey in advance of any ground disturbing work, which is the archaeological standard for characterizing these types of sites. I urge you to listen to the tribe and to respect these important tribal cultural resources which are eligible for the State and National Register of Historic Places by ensuring that they are adequately studied prior to approval of any development agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker.
Okay, before we adjourn to closed session, I want to announce that any final actions taken in closed session will be announced at our regular meeting tonight at 6:30 instead of reconvening after this closed session. So with that, we are adjourned to closed session.